And good evening. Thanks for joining me again this evening for Romans, chapter 6, verses 1 through 14. If you tried to study Romans with me last week, you probably know that around 10 or 15 minutes into the study, the internet connection failed again. And I'm sorry, I'm at a loss to explain that. I suspect the Russians, but also see it looks like I'm a little bit... What I could do. There you go. I can start where I'm not putting the slide up. I also see that my flesh wound is showing. Nothing to be concerned about, just a representative from another denomination came in and said, "Pastor Kent, why are Presbyterian pastors so much smarter than all the other pastors?" And so they're doing a study and they needed some of us to donate brain tissue so they could put it under the microscope and find out what makes us so much smarter than others. So anyhow, it will heal. I love to say it's just because I'm so tall, I banged into a doorway, but you'll know me would know better than that. So as I was saying, I suspect the Russians crashed my study last weekend. I'm sorry for those of you who've tried faithfully to stay with me. That was the second time. The matter fails tonight, we're going to declare war. But here we are, and you're with me, so let me begin us with prayer. And then, as those of you who are involved with KPC know, and those of you who aren't will know now, or I'll remind you, we're doing the 40 days of prayer for our nations. We approach the election coming up, and I think 27 days I heard. So it seems like it's been forever coming. So as we get ready to approach, as we are approaching the election, whichever side of the political aisle you're on, or if you're not involved in politics at all, I think one thing that we can all agree on is that this nation needs prayer. And so utilizing the 40 days of prayer that a lot of other Christians and churches are involved with just fading in, I'll begin tonight with a prayer for today, for the state. So if you have prayer with me, please. Father, we exalt our praise and adoration to you all throughout the day and night. May we never forget that you are merciful and gracious, that you are Creator, receive our devotion and prayers with an attentive listening ear. And Father, I would simply ask that you bless this time of study of this letter, this most powerful, challenging, motivating, and life-changing letter to the Romans. I always refer to it as the letter that changed the world because it did, and it still does. And while we pray that through our study, it will continue by changing us. Let it begin with this one, who's teaching tonight? We ask in Jesus' name, amen. Well, just by way of quick overview, because it's been a couple of weeks now, there's no fault over anybody that I know of. We've seen Romans give a gospel overture where Paul says we are justified by faith, by faith alone, not by our works. Paul has then covered the universal guilt of everyone, Jew and Gentile alike. We're all alike guilty before God, and therefore deserving of God's judgment, all of us. And that judgment would result in our condemnation. And then he goes back to expound upon, more on justification by faith alone. And then I think the last time we studied together, we had looked at the federal headship of Adam and Christ. And up until now, we were all, we were all born under Adam. We all inherited not only a human nature, but a sin nature from Adam. And when we come to faith in Christ, that conversion or regeneration, we are justified by faith in Christ, then at that point, we come under the federal headship of Christ, and we're given a new nature. So up to this point, the last, since we turned a corner from the universal judgment and condemnation of all people everywhere, now since then, Paul's been painting a fairly idealistic picture of the people of God. However, there's something that he has skipped over until now, and that is this word sanctification. Sanctification, we'll be talking about that for the rest of the evening. Justification happens all at once, happens immediately at conversion. When you receive Christ as Lord, you accept the payment He made on the cross for your sins, you are immediately justified in the sight of God, made right in the sight of God. That happens by an act of God's sovereign grace, period. That's justification. Sanctification however, that's a process, and it's a lifelong process. And there are a few other scriptures that sort of lean toward, well, that happens all at once too, but like the English language, the Greek language which Paul wrote Romans, is flexible and can yield different meanings for different words. And so we are, we are, the overall teaching of the New Testament is that justification happens all at once by an act of God's sovereign grace. He declares us made right in His sight. Sanctification however, is a lifelong process. So with that, let me go to tonight's text, which is as you can play and see, Romans 6, chapter, Romans 6, verses 1 through 14. Paul writes as follows. "What shall we say then? Are we to continue in sin so that grace may increase? May it never be. How shall we who died to sin still live in it? Do you not know that all of us who have been baptized into Christ Jesus have been baptized into His death? Therefore, we have been buried with Him through baptism into death, so that as Christ was raised from the dead to the glory of the Father, so we too might walk in newness of life. For if we have become united with Him in the likeness of His death, certainly we shall also be in the likeness of His resurrection. Knowing this, that our old self was crucified with Him in order that our body of sin might be done away with, so that we would no longer be slaves to sin; for he who has died is freed from sin. Now, if we have died with Christ, we believe that we shall also live with Him, knowing that Christ, having been raised from the dead, is never to die again. Death no longer is master over him; for the death that he died, he died to sin once for all. But the life that he lives, he lives to God. Even so, consider yourselves to be dead to sin, but alive to God in Christ Jesus. Therefore, do not let sin reign in your mortal body, so that you obey its lusts, and do not go on presenting the members of your body to sin as instruments of unrighteousness; but present yourselves to God as those alive from the dead, and your members as instruments of righteousness to God. For sin shall not be master over you, for you are not under law, but under grace." We're under new management. We moved from Adam to Christ, from law to grace. We've moved now from our salvation, our justification, into sanctification. This is what theologians like to refer to as the now and the not yet, or the already and the not yet. We've already been made right in God's sight, and yet there's a sense in which we'll be working that out for the rest of our lives. Now, when Paul says this, that we are justified by faith alone, he anticipates the question that the issue of, and I'm going to use a very technical theological term here, but I'll explain it. I told our people at KPC that if I ever use a seminary word, a heavy-duty seminary theological term, and don't explain it, that they have my permission to throw rotting fruit at me. Now, I stay a good ways back, just to make sure I'm sort of out of their throwing range, but you know, we've gotten close a few times. I try never to trot out theological language that ordinary people are going to use. And I wasn't raised in this tradition. I wasn't, I didn't, I didn't learn Reform theology at my parents' knees. I came into it pretty late, so I understand why people have a hard time understanding Reform theology sometimes. Also, I understand why they really have a hard time with these terms. So all that to say, I just used a big term, and I'm going to use the term antinomianism. Antinomianism. Now, what that means is, is against law or without law. Anti, you know what that means. Nomianism comes from the Greek word namos, which is used a lot in the New Testament and about 70 times in Paul's letter to the Romans. So he's up, he's dealing with this issue of the law, and what it does do and doesn't do, what it's good for, what it's not good for, and so forth. When he says, "You're justified by faith in Christ alone," then that raises the question of, well, then we don't have to worry about the law, right? In fact, I teach a men's Bible study on Wednesday mornings, and even though we're way behind this, because we've been not meeting for the last six, seven months, this very question came up this morning. Well, if we're justified by faith, then it doesn't really matter what we do after that, right? We just keep on sinning? The very question came up. And so I told the person that asked that, he was a filthy rotten sinner, and he should look, "No, we didn't, we didn't." We dealt with the question, and we're saying what Paul does. You anticipate the question, and now you're trying to answer it. Let me, let me refer to my namesake, Tim Keller here again. Remind you again, please be praying for Tim. He has pancreatic cancer, which is a tough diagnosis. So pray for Tim. He writes as follows. "The gospel of received righteousness, as opposed to earned righteousness, is radical." It says, "Our moral efforts cannot contribute one bit to our salvation. This message is unique among the world religions and philosophies." We forget this, that this is, this is the only message like it in the world. Every other faith system, I don't care if it's Eastern mysticism, Hinduism, and all its offshoots, Buddhism, Confucianism, all the rest, or the three so-called Western monotheistic faiths of Judaism, Christianity, and Islam, it's all of our other differences. With those three faiths, Judaism, Christianity, and Islam, we all agree there's one God. We define Him very differently than God, but we agree there's one God that makes us monotheistic. Anyway, with all that, that the other faiths have their differences, they all agree on one thing, and that is we must earn our way into God's favor. We must earn our way to heaven, however we define that. And Eastern man defines, Eastern mysticism defines heaven much differently than Western faiths do, but they all agree on this. We're in deep trouble. We are, we are somehow separated from God, however defined, and we must work our way back. Only the gospel of Jesus Christ says, "You can't work your way back. You cannot do it. God has to do it for us by His grace, by His grace through faith." So now we're going to look at this conflict, or this tension between grace and the law. See, Paul has explained to his Jewish friends in Rome, quick reminder, Paul's never been to Rome, he's never met these people, he's gotten reports. There are house churches there, Jewish and Gentile, and probably, probably a split of about 60% Gentile, 40% Jewish. We don't really know, but it seems that way. So Paul has explained to his Jewish friends, his Jewish brethren, Paul is a Jew, remember, why they need the gospel just as much as the Gentiles, and they don't like that very much. And he also explained to them how the law comes up short on salvation. And again, this is a, this is a radical, I mean, it's really an insult to the Jews, saying that the law, God's gift to us, is not, is not essential for salvation, is not necessary, it's inadequate for our salvation. And so he explains to both Jew and Gentile, that you are both made right in God's sight the same way, justified by faith in Messiah, Jesus, the Jewish Messiah, who's come not just for the Jews, but for the Gentiles as well. And He has overcome for them and for us, state of sin and misery in which we have all lived since the fall. Some of our lives are better than others. Those of us here in the United States, not including the city of Miami, as difficult as this year has been, it's much better for us than most people around the world. Please don't overlook the side of that. As challenging as this world's been, as this year has been for you, thank God you're here, and not in some place that has no visible or, or external means of support whatsoever for its people. So having said that, the Jews now have a couple of questions, and they're good questions. All right, so if grace is the way, and if Christ's work is all that counts, if the law and its works have no place for salvation, then why did God give us law? And why have we been striving to obey it all these centuries, and admonished severely for not obeying it all these past centuries? What is the law good for? And moreover, the second question is, this grace you talk about, Paul, doesn't it actually encourage sin? Doesn't it give people a free ride, as it were, the irresponsible freedom to do whatever they want, since grace covers their sins? And that's, and that's the question that I told you, is Paul anticipates, and it comes up every time we talk about the gospel of God's grace. I told this story last week, but I have no idea if it made it out through the, through the internet connection or not. So let me just repeat it again. An imam, and an imam is sort of like a pastor of a church for Muslims. For Muslims, an imam either oversees one church, or maybe more like a bishop, he may oversee a number of churches. Anyway, an imam, a devout Muslim, someone explained the gospel of God's grace to him, and his response was simply, "That is just too good to be true. That is just too good to be true." And if you know much about Islam, you know why that really does seem almost impossible good. And I would say, if I had been the one sharing the gospel with that Muslim cleric, I would say, "My friend, you are not far from the kingdom of God, because you have grasped how unbelievably good the good news is." Maybe better than a lot of us who were raised in a nominally Christian culture. It's not much anymore, we're still functioning on the memory of our preceding generations over all lip service to the Christian faith. So now Paul takes these up. So the answer to the second question, what, does grace encourage sin? It lies in the doctrine of sanctification again, subduing the power of sin. Justification declares us righteous, but becoming righteous, actually living that out is another matter. And so I would remind you of something, I think we said the very first, the very first session of our Romans study, or maybe the second one, something that Martin Luther said. And again, Luther was a very flawed man, very flawed, but he did and said and wrote some incredibly good things. Unfortunately, especially during a young's life, he did and said and wrote some inexcusable things. Anyway, Martin Luther says this, "We are saved by faith alone, but the faith that saves is never alone." We're saved by faith alone, but the faith that saves is never alone. And so Paul is going to focus on sanctification and the believer's growth in spiritual material with the next several chapters, and the struggle that it is. And so he follows up the discussion we had again, I think it was two weeks ago, mine or three, about, about Adam and Christ as our federal heads, and that we are either subject to the results of Adam's act of rebellion, or we're subject to the effects of Christ's act, His actions of righteousness. We're all in Adam to begin with. And Paul shows us in the next few chapters that the transfer of believers through justification, from being in Adam to being in Christ, gives its evidence, it gives proof, well, we prove it through a new way of life, and that comes through sanctification. So Paul says, "We died to sin." Well, how is that? What does that mean that we died to sin? He says, back in chapter 5, verse 20, he says, "The law came in so that the transgression would increase." Now again, this is a shock to the Jews. What do you mean the law came in so that transgressions would increase? The Jews looked upon the law as their way of righteousness. This is what God gave us, to explain to us what He's like, and how were you being made right in His sight. And then Paul's saying, "Yeah, but it just increased your sin." And he'll address that further, especially definitely getting to chapter 7, which I hope you'll stay with me for. We're in chapter 6. We'll be here tonight, maybe one more night, and then I think in two weeks, we'll be in chapter 7. And if you struggle with your salvation, and we're feeling like you are not the person you're supposed to be, you're not the woman of God you're supposed to be, you're not the man of God, or the young person that you're supposed to be, join the crowd. And I hope you'll be here with us in two weeks when we talk about Romans, chapter 7. We talk about a picture of a, of a man in conflict over how far he falls short of the glory of God and all that he should be. So back in chapter 3, Paul's, and again, he's, we don't think there really is somebody sitting in the, in the house there in Corinth where they're objecting, it's, "Well, yeah, well, what about this, Paul?" But Paul is imagining the objections that the people might have. And my bias, but I think good preachers, good communicators do that. As we, as we talk about a subject, a biblical passage, whatever, we try to anticipate the objections that a, that a non-Christian, especially one who's skeptical or outright cynical, might have, and we try to answer those questions as we go. And that way, the person sitting there thinking, "Wait, how'd you know that was my question?" Well, because we've been at this for a while. When Paul writes his letter to the Romans, he's been preaching the gospel for 22 years. He kind of knows what objections he's going to run into. Well, I've been doing this longer than Paul had at that point. I'm not as smart as he is, I'm not as experienced, I haven't been in as many different situations, but I've heard a lot of the objections. And so we try to anticipate those and answer those. It's just respectful for people who are listening to us who aren't Christians, whether it's in person or online or whatever, to respect the person who does not know Christ as Lord, and assume that he or she is a reasonably intelligent person with open questions, honest questions, and try to answer those. As I told them at the beginning of the Bible study, I've learned a long time ago, there are two kinds of preaching that people will not tolerate, poor preaching and good preaching. But we try to do the best preaching we can anyway, and that includes anticipating people's questions. And so Paul said, the questioner, the challenger says to Paul, "Well, if sin increases God's grace, and that's a good thing, well, maybe we should send some more. Maybe we ought to all send some more." And might also follow up the question with, besides, "What would it matter if we send more anyways?" Grace has it all covered. And so this is Paul's answer to that question. It was first raised by what he said back in chapter 3, and now here in chapter 6, he's answering it. Let me go to something that, again, one of the things I try to do with the study is introduce you to some of the great writers and thinkers through the ages, who have something good to say about this. John Stott is one, who wrote a just masterful commentary, I don't know, so I like to refer him a lot. Here's what the late Anglican bishop said, Anglican rector, I don't think he's a bishop. So they put it in the form of a question. "Are we to continue in sin so that grace may increase?" They were implying that Paul's gospel of free grace actually encouraged lawlessness and put a premium on sin, because it promised sinners the best of both worlds. They can indulge themselves freely in this world without any fear of forfeiting the I mentioned a term earlier, and the technical term for people to think that way is antinomians. These are people who set themselves up against the moral law. Again, the Greek word, there's namos. When you hear our words like economy, okay, or ergonomy, trigonometry, the word N-O-M-O in the beginning or middle, or the middle or the end of a word, means there's a law of something. Economics literally means house law. We have used it to mean the laws of, of obviously the economy, the laws of finance and commerce and so forth. So the word namos, people who are antinomian, they're against law, and they imagine that they can just dispense with God's moral law. Now, I dare say that if we are truly preaching the doctrines of grace openly, fearlessly, faithfully, then we're going to at least occasionally have people say, "Well, then if that's true, then I can just sin all I want." If we don't ever have anybody raise that objection to what we're saying, especially legalistic Christians, then we're probably not preaching the gospel of God's grace fearlessly enough. So I would remind you again of something that Church Father Tertullian, late 2nd century, early 3rd century, Church Father Tertullian said, "Just as Jesus was crucified between two thieves, the gospel is ever crucified between two errors, which two? Well, the one of antinomianism is that the moral law doesn't matter, and the opposite error of legalism, as if keeping God's moral law is all that matters." One person tries to keep God's law as strenuously as he can, because he thinks he must measure up to God's standards, he must get a passing grade on God's moral examinations. And by the way, none of us do. And the other person says, "Well, it doesn't matter. I can live however I want." There's the antinomians, antinomians. "The gospel is forever crucified between those two errors, antinomianism and legalism." So setting oneself up against the moral law, and we find a reference a number of other times in the New Testament, where like in Jude, Paul, or Jude, the writer, says, "An godly person who turned the grace of God into licentiousness," that is Jude, chapter 4. People who think that way, that the grace of God is just licensed to sin, show that they really don't understand God's grace, or what it costs God to extend that grace and mercy to us. I think I've said this to you before, but I'll say it again. There are only two kinds of people in the world. We're all sinners. Some of us care about our sins, and some of us don't. We're all sinners, every single one of us. The saintly and godly person you know or have ever heard of was in fact a sinner who comes short of the glory of God. It's a clear teaching in the Bible, especially in Romans, especially chapter 3. We are all sinners who fall short of God's glory. Some of us care, and some of us don't. If you find yourself able to sin and not care about it at all, it's not my place to tell you that you're not a Christian, that's between you and God, and you may well be, but you really need to go before the Lord and ask Him to confront you with your lack of gratitude for what it costs God to extend that grace to you. I remember a young lady I knew when I was in charge of a single adult ministry many moons ago, and she had lived the party life here in Miami a lot. And in fact, this was back in a time when Coconut Grove was the place to be for nightlife, and she worked as a hostess of sorts in one of the hotels there. And she freely told me that she'd lived a pretty sexually promiscuous lifestyle, and this was her share of the gospel with her, and she came to faith in Christ. And I said, "Well, what happened?" She said, "Well, for a while, I kept around doing the same things I've been doing before, but now it bothered me." I said, "Well, good." That means, that means the grace of God is getting hold of your heart, was getting hold of your heart, transforming you from what you were to what you're going to be one day. Yeah, God's a real killer, isn't He? But He knows what's best for us, and He wants what's best for us. And so He takes those sins we used to enjoy, and suddenly, they don't taste so sweet to us anymore. So Paul now answers that charge of antinomianism, and he treats his questioner as though he's just ignorant of the truth. Not that he's intentionally against, he's just ignorant of it. "Do you not know?" Verse 3, he says, "Do you not know?" And he assumes they haven't really understood the true meaning of conversion and what baptism symbolizes, signifies. Otherwise, they wouldn't have asked that question. And so he explains. And so the commentators here, all theologians stop and say, "Well, what does it mean we have died to sin? How does that happen? How does that happen? What actually has died? And how did it happen? And when did it happen?" I don't know about you, I probably do, but I'll assume I don't. But I don't feel dead to sin a lot of the time. I think especially when I'm driving in rush hour traffic in Miami, I feel real alive to sin. My attitude's toward my fellow Miami drivers. I heard a story that a Christian counselor told on himself one time. He said that he, because his schedule was flexible, he normally drove his young children to school in the mornings. One day, he had a conflict, so his wife had to drive the kids to school. And they're getting close to school, and this little boy, he was about five or six at the time, sitting in the backseat, said, "Mommy?" "Yes, dear." "Where are all the idiots?" His mom looked in the mirror and said, "What are you talking about? What do you mean, where are all the idiots?" And the little boy said, "Well, when Daddy drives us to school, there are all these idiots all over the place, but you haven't mentioned any. Where are all the idiots?" The man said that when he heard that out of the mouth of his child, excuse me, he knew it was time for him to watch his attitude and his words when he drove in traffic. Excuse me. Sorry, happens to me every night about halfway through the study, I think. So to talk about how we die to sin... So, to talk about how we die to sin, and why Paul uses this metaphor of baptism here, it's quite a lengthy study, it'll take a while. But let me, let me suffice it to say this. There are those who look at baptism as this practice in the New Testament. And they see in the various episodes in the book of Acts, there is mentions in the epistles, the letters, where Christians are told to believe and be baptized. And some Christians, some denominations teach, therefore, in order to be saved, you must be baptized as well. And some traditions teach that salvation happens at baptism, that when a person is baptized, he or she becomes a Christian right there on the spot. Including some traditions that hold that when we baptize our babies, our infants, our young people, that that saves them and makes them, makes them right in God's sight for the rest of their lives. I have been to funerals where the person, and we all pretty much knew that he or she showed no evidence whatsoever of living a Christian life. Again, God knows, we don't. But there was no external evidence that this person had ever seriously followed Christ. But the person doing the funeral, and by the way, I've had to do so on these funerals, they are not easy to do. You try to find something to say that will give the family and the loved ones some comfort. But, but, one thing you will never hear me say, which happened to some of these funerals or memorial services, that because this person was baptized, he's in heaven. He's heaven because he was baptized. That is utter nonsense, and it is completely unbiblical. Paul has spent the bulk of the five chapters up to this point talking about justification by faith alone, period. The idea that he would now, in chapter six, suddenly have a, I don't know, a mental breakdown, Alzheimer's, and forget everything he said up to this point and say, "Oh, and by the way, it's baptism too. Or it's baptism that'll take care of it." It is, well, let me, let me ask Pastor Stott to take it here, here, and give me his quote too. "It is inconceivable that the Apostle Paul, having spent three chapters arguing that justification is by faith alone, should now shift his ground, contradict himself, and declare that after all, salvation is by baptism." I mean, again, that's just, just inconceivable. Paul would have to be either a blithering idiot or have totally forgotten and now feels free to contradict everything he's already said. So in verses three and four, he uses baptism as a metaphor for our identification with Christ that we're buried within the baptism and we're raised to walk in the newness of life. We identify with Him in His death, and we identify with Him in His life. Baptism is a beautiful symbol of that. I don't care how much water you use, and overall, it doesn't matter at what point. I know some traditions teach believers baptism. I respect that, I understand why they teach it that way. I respectfully disagree. I believe it's to be a sign of the covenant, and therefore, Christians should, if possible, baptize their children. Doesn't make them Christians, but it does say, "We're going to raise this child in the nurture and admonition of the Lord. We're going to do everything we can to help this child grow up to be a Christian." But at some point, he or she has to make a decision for Christ on their own, okay? Now, if an adult receives Christ and was never baptized or doesn't know it, by all means, we should baptize that person. Why? Because they can't go to heaven without it? No, not at all. But we'll say one more time. I believe in baptism, I do. It is a beautiful picture of what Christ has done for us. But I'm real sure of this, when you stand before God the Father, and He asks that great evangelism explosion question, "Why shall I let you in my heaven?" If you answer, "Because I am bought with the blood of Christ, Christ has forgiven my sins," God is not going to say that to me, "Hey, that's great." Oh, by the way, were you baptized? And if so, at what point in your life, and by whom, and how much water did they use? I'm very sure God will not say that to us. And if He does, I'm in trouble, okay? But that is not the gospel of God's grace. So baptism, in baptism, we identify with Christ. And I always say, we identify with Him like a, a situation I know well, like the people of St. Louis that identify with their baseball Cardinals, who got put out of the playoffs on Friday, darn it all. Or the people of Green Bay identify with the Packers. Or how Dominicans identify with Albert Pujols, or Cubans identified with Jose Fernandez until his very unfortunate death. The Portuguese identify with Cristiano Ronaldo, the soccer player, although that's a troubling identification right now too. Or any country identifies with its Olympic team or its World Cup team. We identify very strongly with them. But really, what those people do on the playing field or on the court really has no bearing on my life. Whether my favorite team or my favorite individual sport player, whether those people win or lose, really has nothing to do with me. They will play the game the same way, whether I'm their fan or not, whether I exist or not. I just choose to enjoy their successes and die with their defeats, like we're doing with the Miami Heat right now. It's not over, and the Marlins, it's not over. But it's gonna be a hard battle from here for both of them. We identify with those people because we just choose to enjoy the sport or the people who play it. But it really has nothing to do with us. Baptism, in baptism, we identify with Christ, and it has everything to do with us. It is a symbol, a signifier that we belong to Him. So, moving on from bathrooms, because I realize the clock is getting away, and I'm, I don't know if we can get to verse 14 tonight, and I hope, I think I will, I'll do the best I can to move on a little bit. So, baptism, just as we sin when Adam sinned and we inherited Adam's sin nature, so we died when Christ died. God imputed Adam's sin to us. He applies Christ's death to us. When did this application occur? When did we get painted with the broad brush or identified baptized into Christ's death? It's when we first believed and trusted in Christ upon our conversion. Paul will say a good bit more about this later. A theologian of two centuries ago, or a century and a half, two centuries ago, named C.J. Vaughn put it this way. "In other words, our baptism was a sort of funeral. A funeral, yes, and a resurrection from the grave as well. A funeral, yes, and a resurrection from the grave as well. We're buried with Christ in baptism, and we're raised to walk in newness of life." So, we died to sin. How? To union with Christ in His death. And we're therefore, quote, "buried with Him," verse four says. So when He was raised from the dead to a glorious new life, we too might be raised to walk ongoing action for the rest of our lives in the newness of life. All right, again, gotta move on. So, that comes next, raises the next big question. So, since we're still very much alive, what died? Paul says, "Our old self was crucified with Christ," in verse six. There was an old self that died. Who is our old self? Literally, there it's old man. I identify the, the word there as the old man. What, who and what was our old self? If our new life is a result of our union with Christ and His resurrection, then the old man who dies, the old self, must necessarily be Adam, who we were before conversion. That's our old man. The old life we lived is a consequence of Adam's transgression. The old man was the sin nature that we inherited from Adam. Again, he is our federal head with our sin nature. That old self was crucified with Christ. In order to that, verse six says, "Our body of sin might be done away with." Death, both physical and spiritual, comes through our sin, imputed sin from Adam and the actual sins that we commit. It comes to our end through our sinful nature. We not only, we not only sinned when Adam sinned, but we inherited his propensity to sin. And we were all born with an incurable case of it, an incurable infection of it. Romans chapter three, verse 10, "There is no one righteous, not even one." So how do we break free of that? How are we cured of it? Well, we're not, except that Christ has cured it and is Himself the cure. And when we receive Him by faith and are justified by faith through His death, made righteous through His death, and raised to walk in newness of life through His resurrection, then at that point, that old man, that old nature has died. Now, again, we realize that may be theological too, but man, we don't feel it. We struggle with that. And so, Tim Keller, again, I think makes a, has a, a good analogy, so let me just go straight to that. Tim says, "If a wicked military force had complete control of a country, and a good army invaded, the good army could throw the wicked force out of power and give the capital and the seat of government and communication back to the people. But the out-of-power soldiers could still live out in the bush. This guerrilla force could create havoc for the new rightful government. It could often impose its will on part of the country, even though it can never get back into power." I think that's a good analogy for what happens with our sin nature. It's been conquered, it's been pushed to the, pushed to the margin of our lives, but it's still, it still creates havoc on us sometimes. It stages guerrilla raids on our new nature. Someone put it this way, "The dragon is dead, but his tail still swishes." And that's the ultimate reason that we die with Christ. The old man was crucified so that the power of sin could be broken. Outside of Christ, we had no choice but to sin. The best we could do, the most righteous thing we could do, we're never going to be good enough for God. But in Christ, we can obey Him. We have a choice not to sin. You have a choice to be righteous and to act righteously in God's sight, because again, it comes through faith. So, again, I'm, I'm moving more quickly than I wanted to because I spent too much time talking about the first one. Verse seven, we read that anyone who has died has been freed from sin. And so Paul again seems to be underscoring rather succinctly what he's already said. And scholars point out that when he said, "We've been freed from sin," it actually means we've been justified from sin. We've been made free because God has justified us away from our sin. God has, God has taken us from our sinful condition and has made us right in His sight, justifying both our old sin nature and making us new and right in God's eyes through faith. All right. That's what I get for spending too much time on the first several verses. All right, Paul goes on to say that if we have died with Him, then we've also been resurrected in Him. And that's really the so what of this whole message, this whole thesis. It's that Christ's death must be applied to those who believe, because only He who has died to sin is justified from sin, and that the wages of sin, which are, which is death, our old man was crucified with Christ. So those wages have been satisfied in Christ, just as surely as if we had physically died ourselves. And when we die, we will be free from sin. So we need to trust that that is true of us now in God's sight, that He has made us, He sees us as dead to sin. And when Christ died physically, then He no longer was subject to sin either. Now, He never sinned, but the Bible is quite clear that He had a human nature that was subject to temptation. The writer of Hebrews, and won't take time to read it all now, but in Hebrews 4:15, he says, "We don't have a high priest that can understand our sinful nature. We have one who is tempted in all things, just like we are." He does understand, but He was without sin. So He understands temptation. He also knows what it takes to overcome it, and He has overcome it for us. And then that overcoming has been applied to us in Christ. Again, we don't always feel it, and we don't always live it, but it's still true. In fact, we jump to something that John Stott says again. Stott says, "Can a married woman live as though she were single? Of course. But let her remember who she is, united to her husband. Likewise, can a believer live as though he were still in his sins? Of course. But let him remember who he is, united to Christ. Just as marriage severs the single life, so union with Christ severs the sinful life." So how can we think of returning to it? And why would we want to? Well, let me, let me be real blunt here. People who've been married for more than oh, two weeks or so might understand why sometimes you maybe wish you weren't married. This is not applied to me, of course. Anybody that's watching, that's my wife, please assure her that I mean that, okay? But there are times in any marriage where you look at that person you're married to and say, "You know, you're not the prince charming you were when we were dating. You're not the princess that you were when we were dating." And sometimes you think, "Yeah, my life would be a lot easier without that person." Sometimes we think that way. But the fact of the matter is, you're still married. You're still married. So yes, sometimes you might want to return to a single life. The Christian might want to return to his pre-Christian lives, pre-Christian life. But there's no going back. There's no going back. If you're married, you really are married. And if you're a Christian, you really are a Christian. There's no such thing as divorce in the Christian experience. So, Paul will address more again of this conflict, these tensions, when, when we get to chapter seven. So let me just do this again because of the time. And what can I say? I enjoyed expounding upon the first several verses too much. I didn't leave enough time for the second. But let me see if I can draw an analogy for you here. Those of you who know me well know that I love history, and I know that we learn a lot from history. And I think it is one of the major problems that we see in our country today is that we don't know our history. The average American is so ignorant of our past. So he's basically at the whim, he is, he is susceptible to whatever his or her professors tells them, whatever the most persuasive person on a social website, social media website says, or what they see on television. We don't know our history. So here's a slice of history for you. On December 23rd, 1814, we had the Battle of New Orleans. It commenced on December 23rd, 1814, and ran through January 8th, 1815. The British Army, this is in the War of 1812, had advanced on the American army, and they had a huge advantage in numbers and weaponry and so forth, and a lot, a lot more experience. The American forces were basically, history repeats itself, a ragtag bunch of rebels who knew how to shoot, and knew how to fight basically a guerrilla warfare. But against a superior military like that, they would have been, they would have been cut to pieces. But because under the leadership of General Andrew Jackson, yes, I know he was a slave owner. Yes, I know he was a flawed man. I probably know about his flaws may as well or better than you do. But he was a good military leader. And he led his troops, and get this, when the battle was over, the Americans had lost 60 men, the British about 2,000. And that was the last battle of the War of 1812. Now, all good, America defeated the British again and continued our independence. Here's the irony of it. The Battle of New Orleans took place 18 days after the war had been officially ended. The Treaty of Ghent, which formally ended the battle, the year, Treaty of Ghent, which formally ended the War of 1812, had been signed on December 24th, 1814. So that battle that was fought in New Orleans, the 2,000 British casualties and 60 American casualties, it didn't have to be fought at all. But the men there didn't know the war was over. For them, it was still going on, they had to fight that battle. Well, I probably don't have to do the analogy for it, explain it for you, but I'll do very quickly. That's how it feels to us, that war has been declared over. Jesus has won it all. We win. God's people win. Unfortunately, down here, someone's just haven't gotten the message. So it feels for us like the battle rages on. We'll talk more about that next week. Thank you for hanging in with me again this week. And if you have stayed with me through the study, God bless you. To quote a good friend of mine, "You get three free sins the rest of this week." Just kidding, that's not real. What you do... Thank you for hanging in with me again this week. And if you have stayed with me through the study, God bless you. To quote a good friend of mine, "You get three free sins the rest of this week." Just kidding. That's not real. But you do get two. Anyway, if you've got questions, email me, kent@kendallpress.org, kent@kendallpress.org. And we'll recommence next week with Romans chapter six, verse 15. Thank you. Be well, and God bless.